You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the September 22nd meeting for the LaPorte County Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.AccessLaPorteCounty.org.
Good evening. I'd like to call the, what do we have here? September 22nd, 2025 regular council meeting to order. If everyone would rise for the pledge and also followed by a moment of silence for Rick Neary, firefighter that unfortunately passed this past week.
Mr. Kessler. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Auditor, the pledge, or the roll call, please.
Mr. Kessler.
Present.
Mr. Kessler.
Present.
Mr. Mueller.
Present.
Mr. President.
Present.
Mr. President.
Present.
Present.
We have everyone present.
Thank you, Mr. Auditor. I entertain a motion of approval for the agenda.
Motion to approve agenda is approved, or presented.
Motion by Mr. Kessler. Second by Mr. Novak. All in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Approval of the 2020, August 25th, 2025 regular meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Mr. Novak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kessler. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Public comment.
Steve Hallfield, 6782 East Hunter-South Mill Creek. You guys were discussing earlier tonight about raises. I think you seriously need to consider that for these employees, one way or another. This might possibly make it easier and won't help, it might hurt feelings, but possibly to help out, maybe all the elected in this county can go without any raise. And the raise money that was going to go towards us could go help these employees because if we keep losing more of them, this county runs and works on our employees, not us. I think myself personally, most department heads could run these departments and this county government would run fine without most of us here. So I, just a consideration. Thank you.
Any other members of the public? That public comment is now closed. Department head reports.
Good evening.
I'm Lynn Swanson, LaPorte County Coroner, and I'm here basically to try to get some answers on a resolution on something that I've been dealing with for the past three and a half years. If I can, can I pass these out to the members?
Absolutely.
Do you want us to pass it down?
Okay, what this is about is, for the past three and a half years, I have been asking about how to get a raise for the chief deputy position. Currently, my, and I shouldn't refer to a single person, but currently the chief deputy makes $25,359 a year. In her job description, it not only lists what she is scheduled to work, but on-call 24/7. As a chief deputy, she also stands in for me when I'm out of town, at a conference, on a vacation, wherever. I was finally told that I needed to go before the classification committee, re- job classification committee. I filled out the paperwork in April, got a meeting with them in July, and that's kind of where it's ended. I've not heard a word from anyone. It was stated during that meeting that according to FLSA rules, an exempt employee does not get overtime pay. And that's fine. I provided four months at that time of what her schedule, what she's actually on the schedule to work each week or each month, because we have a monthly schedule. It also states in FLSA rules that for her to be an exempt employee, her base salary should be 35,568. So we're obviously way below that.
Did, may I?
Absolutely.
You said she's part-time.
I didn't say she's part-time. The job description said she's part-time.
Jimmy and I, we were there. You said she's a part-time person.
According to...
Working 80 hours every two weeks.
She's working more than that, but if you look at the, well, you don't have them here with...
So it was stated in that meeting, she's part-time?
By her job description that was written up in 2006.
Turn it back.
She's not a part-time employee, not working 24/7 and being on a physical schedule. And I didn't, I don't have copies for each of you of her schedule.
Who made her a full-time employee?
Nobody's made her a full-time employee.
Okay, then she's part-time.
That's what I'm saying. She's considered a part-time employee according to the job classification.
But what is her salary?
Unclassified. FLSA exempt. So just...
What was your question?
As a little bit of a idea of what she is actually on a schedule...
Go ahead. Keep talking.
Finish.
In January, first week of January, 30 hours, 45 hours, 30, 40, 40. February, 45, 55, 65, 40. March, 45, 45, 40, 25, because she went on vacation and to a training conference. April, 30, 60, 45, 45, and 30. To expect someone to continue to work those kind of hours, plus she does all the scheduling, she does all the training, I mean, she's on-call 24/7, she's also receiving phone calls on her days when she's on-call and off-call, asking questions of the new trainees. To work for $25,000 a year is, not even a part-time person makes only $25,000.
If she's part-time, she should only be working, what, 27 hours a week?
That would be fine if we could find enough deputies to fill in for the hours.
Well, that's all she's supposed to be working, is 27 hours a week. She's part-time.
So who would you suggest that I put on for the rest of the hours?
I have no idea. Did you, did, previously, there were two chief deputies?
There were, and they split that $25,000 salary.
Right.
But there was, there's no reason for...
One was north, one was south, and you...
Right. There was no reason for it to have two people, just because one didn't want to go into LaPorte, the other one didn't want to go into Michigan City. Whoever the powers that be at that time split the job, and they were each getting like $12,000 a year.
And not be smart, that's why we, that's why we have LaPorte and Michigan City Courts because they didn't want to go back and forth.
Bottom line is, if you're a chief deputy and you're in LaPorte and there's a bad call in Michigan City, you're expected to show up. So you're going to get there anyway.
Question more or less, she's been a part-time person, that's accepted already at this point, so you need more deputies so she doesn't have to do as much deputy work. So are you, are your shortfall deputies?
My, yes, I have five deputies right now.
How many should you have?
Probably eight to 10.
Okay, so you have a...
But they're all on-call, right?
They're all on-call.
It's not a consistent hour.
Even the part-time deputy position, not a chief, even the part-time deputy position states on-call 24/7.
But they're at 1099.
They're all, yeah, she, they're 1099s.
They're 1099. So they're outside of the federal laws.
Right.
Right. But the, the...
I'm not questioning them.
The person you have in the chief deputy's position, to require that person to be on-call 24 hours, 24/7, as you stated, I think you're walking a very fine line in creating a lawsuit for the, I'll just put it out there. Because you, I'm just saying, to, without compensation, that doesn't work that way. So even if we, even if we bumped her pay up, if she exceeds, you can't, you can't, say somebody's on 24/7, you can't do it.
Okay, so obviously the job descriptions need to be rewritten. That would be number one.
That's something that was said in that meeting.
Right.
And has that been done?
No. Who does that?
You, did, you're...
No, I, no. This has not been done since 2006. I do not write their job...
But how, how is anybody but you going to know what that person does? I mean, you're the only person...
I can provide the information, which I did, but I don't write the policy.
No, not policy.
There's no...
Not policy.
Well, that description. I don't write that job description.
So you would take the current one, make the changes, and supply that to HR and the committee again.
I did.
You updated that.
I updated.
You gave us an update?
Pardon me?
You gave us an updated version?
I gave HR an updated.
You sent us an email. Jimmy responded to your email about updating the...
Updating the job description. I haven't seen it.
We didn't get anything back.
A job evaluation, we haven't seen.
I haven't seen it either. Like I said, it just seems to keep falling by the wayside. It gets so far and then it's dropped off the face of the earth again.
It seemed like if you really wanted this, you would go to HR and say, where's my job description? Have you talked to her?
I have done that.
And what'd she say?
She said, I don't know. She said, this needs to go before the budget committee.
No, no, no. You're confused on jobs here.
No, I'm not. She is also saying, she doesn't believe, number one, that it was up to the classification committee or the reclassification to have a meeting regarding the salary. You know, her job description is her job description, with the exception of a few changes. What I'm concerned about is her salary. Even as a non-exempt or an exempt, no, as an exempt employee, her salary should be a minimum of $35,000.
So looking at the, I'm looking at the current salary grid, and she's listed, the first deputy is listed as unclassified, non-exempt on the salary ordinance.
No, I have it right here. Part-time chief deputy coroner.
They both, they both have it here. On the, they're reading the salary ordinance.
Yeah. So you're different than...
That's the salary ordinance.
Is that a job description you have there?
This is her job description, yes.
Which is not, since, what year was that?
2006.
So this is consistent with other job descriptions, which we're finding haven't been updated in quite some time. I think it's in your interest to be the ones to revise it, just because you're the department head, you know what duties are assigned to them, and it sounds like this is pretty straightforward. You want to change where it says part-time to full-time, right?
Right.
So your goal in this is that you want this chief deputy to be a full-time position and the compensation to be above 35,568, right? If that was accomplished...
We're at 35. I'm, you know, I realize that's a huge jump from what she's making now.
But that's your objective, but what does the council want to accomplish?
I see another objective here. Skipping with, let her work, she's working part-time, 27 hours, she don't have enough deputies. This, one does not equate to the other. You're really coming to me telling you don't have enough deputies.
I don't, because...
That's what I'm saying.
With what we pay our deputies, which on the other piece of paper that I gave you...
But why are you, you're bringing up just the chief deputy, why aren't you talking about the deputies?
Because the deputies are paid through a 1099.
I understand that.
She is paid as a county employee.
But you got to explain, she has to go if somebody else doesn't go, is that correct?
Yes.
So that, so she's short deputies, regular deputies.
Right.
So that's putting more burden, I'm trying to help you.
On her, yes.
Right, exactly.
On the chief deputy position.
When we spoke earlier, you indicated that your, your chief deputy has a flexibility to work during days when a lot of your other employees are not able to, your other deputies are not able to...
Right, because they have full-time jobs.
Okay, so...
Reason I'm having so much trouble finding regular deputies is because of what we pay them.
Which is?
Which, we pay, they get paid $150 per call. You guys did give them a per diem of when they're on-call, if they don't get a call in a 12-hour period, they get $25. If they don't get a call in a 24-hour period, they get $50. So that gives them a little something, even though, you know, they can't leave the county, they can't really plan any outings, they, they have to be available during that 12 or 24-hour shift.
Isn't there another stipend on top of that?
No.
If they go to a call...
They get $150 per call. If they transport, if they have to transport to the hospital, it's another $100.
Right.
Like from, you know, if they're out on 94, it's an accident, or whatever the case is, they have to be transported to the hospital.
So as much as 250.
As much as.
250, if they did everything.
If they did everything.
And if, what was the amount per hour if they don't respond to anything?
Well, they get $25.
There's nothing per hour.
So...
There's nothing per hour. It's a $25 stipend for a 12-hour shift and $50 for a 24-hour shift.
So you get $50 to hold 24 hours of your day open and not do anything else?
They weren't getting anything. They were pretty happy when they, when I said, hey, I got you this.
And they were getting $50 a call.
Well, that was...
Well, when I came on, that's...
Right, but how long ago was that?
Not as long as Mr....
And none of these, none of these individuals are working more than 27 hours in a week or whatever the threshold is where they're not part-time anymore.
Doesn't matter. They're not, they're 1099.
They're 1099, so apparently they're saying that doesn't matter.
I know.
But yes, they are.
Is this allowable for us to categorize these as, treating them as 1099s? I mean, it sounds like we're pretty clearly dictating the times that they have to be available and their job duties and how they perform their job.
It's not uncommon for the state of Indiana.
I'm asking the attorney.
No, but it's not uncommon for the state of Indiana.
No, it's, it's fine. It's fine.
The question is, are chief deputy working as many hours as she is and being on-call? I think that's...
That's problematic.
Yeah.
So, to summarize things a bit, I'm going to try to, let me try to put some shape to this. So we're standing in front of both having a salary grid that says non-exempt, unclassified, but you have a job description that needs red...
No, it says, her, her position is exempt.
Salary grid. Salary grid trumps everything.
Salary grid is unclassified, non-exempt.
Okay.
Right? We somehow need to make a change regarding the job description to capture current duties.
That's the whole problem.
And obviously the classification, like what we have right now for the salary grid, and get that in front of HR and use that as the, the linchpin in order to get the job classification committee, the job evaluation committee together to review that, classify it, and look at it from a, from a pay standpoint based on your request. But I think as a second part of that, in order to alleviate her hours, is what can we do, whether that be just advertise for the, the opportunity for a 1099 employee to be able to get you a couple of more deputies in order to cover the hours.
Which, which I've done that.
Okay.
And I received approximately 30 applications. In weeding through the applications, nobody wants to work the kind of hours that we're required to work. They want to be able to pick their hours, pick the days they want to work. Oh, we have to go to school? Yeah, they don't want to do that. People don't understand what we do, is the bottom line. They think that we go out, like on TV and, no, he died, and we get back in our car and we drive away. If it were only that simple.
Yep.
So, you know, out of those 30 applications, I had probably three that I could consider hiring. When we got to the point of going to school, well, I'm going to be out of town that week, I can't go. We only have two chances every year to send somebody to school. And they have to be Indiana-certified before I can put them on the road by themselves. So, I mean, it, you know, I'm very limited as to what, and a lot of them, quite frankly, think the pay stinks. You know? Some of these calls...
Can I ask you a quick, so if the pay stunk, you advertised the pay and 30 people applied for it?
I don't advertise the pay. I tell them, I bring them in for an interview, call them for an interview to come in, and the first thing they say is, what is it paid?
Okay, because I, all our job, they, they tell that the pay is, so you don't tell them?
I don't.
Well, in this case, it's 1099.
It's 1099, yeah. So out of that...
Doesn't matter.
Out of that, what they're making, they have to pay their own taxes, they have to buy their own gas.
So what do, what do adjoining counties pay their coroners?
I was, in one of the emails that went back and forth, I was asked to check with what Porter County did, so I did.
What do the other counties?
I spoke to them today.
Well, yeah. And Porter County's a very expensive, I wish we had the money that Porter County had, but we don't. We don't have the population.
I understand, but that was the one that I was told to get.
I don't know who did, but I, we don't have the population, we don't have anything that Porter County's able to afford to do.
Well, but we do the same amount of calls that they do.
That's hard to say, but we're, I'm just saying.
I can tell you, we do the same amount of calls that they do.
They're sitting on a huge trust fund, so they got tons of money. They give a hospital back to the, it's a long story, but they don't have to worry about the money.
Well, apparently they do because, you know, she...
We need, we need a more broader look at what they pay, not just Porter County. Can you take a look at what they, what they pay surrounding yours? And can I also recommend that... For deputies we're talking about. We get that job description updated and then go to HR at the council's request that the committee to look at this again after the job description is revamped.
Okay.
Yeah. Just so this doesn't drag out longer than necessary, because I think your goal is to get this implemented, like for next year's budget.
Yeah.
She's going to change the job description, which is going to be, you know, part-time to full-time and a couple other words on it. So then it's going to go before the job evaluation committee. How quickly can we get that scheduled? Doesn't our ordinance for that say that we only do evaluations? This actually isn't even a classification issue because it's not classified in the first place. So why does it need to go before the committee that's in charge of classifications?
I think you meant personnel committee.
That's what I meant.
Personnel committee or job classification committee?
It's also a first deputy, not a chief deputy.
I mean, we should take a look at the ordinance because I don't think it matches that.
There's a difference. You can bring, do it and bring it back here. I don't, I don't care where you bring it.
Well, I guess basically that's...
We can override anything, but...
You know, as much as I wanted to let everybody know that what I'm struggling with, I'm looking for answers moving forward. Like I said, I've been trying to do this now for three and a half years, and I'm no further than when I was the day I started.
If you make the changes to the, to the job description, get it in front of HR, I'll follow up with that, with both of you to make sure that it's moving forward, at least to get revised for review.
And we have to classify as a first deputy, not a chief deputy.
That's correct. That's what it says here, as actually first deputy.
There's an error in that comment.
Yeah, and I'm not, I wasn't here when all of that was done, so I don't know what first deputy means as opposed to chief or regular deputy. I mean, you know, first deputy may mean chief deputy, but I think it should be listed as chief deputy.
Yeah, and it's part of the job description, but generally what you have is you have an elected official at chief, and you might have one or, or a few first deputies depending on what the function of the office is.
They're just listed as deputies, yes.
Okay. And Rick, go ahead. Regardless of what we do, we got to fix this, that she's on-call 24/7 and working gazillion hours. I mean, this needs to be...
Believe me, I would rather have five more deputies to not only relieve the stress off of her, but the stress off the rest of the deputies as well. I mean, we, you know, we don't even have an avenue to go down for debriefing, stress relief, nothing. These people get burnt out. I mean, seeing, they know when they come in, what the job is, that we deal with death. But there's certain calls that we have to respond to on a regular basis that you don't just go home and go to bed and forget about it.
I know.
You know, I mean, right, people that are first responders understand that, but those that are not just figure, well, that's the job they chose, so, you know, but it, I mean, it takes a toll on you after a while.
Understandably.
And that's the reason I've lost the last two deputies that I've lost, is that they just can't take it anymore. There's nowhere for them to go. They're, you know, they have no insurance where they can call a psychologist or a psychiatrist or a therapist and go sit down and talk to them without paying them $250. Well, shoot, you know, they can't afford that either.
So it's, the sheriff is in the room, does, do our sheriff's deputies have access to on-call psychological services?
We have a line item within our budget for them.
Is that something that could be extended to the coroner's office?
You have new avenues.
Okay.
Well, timeout.
But they're not employees, so is that something they can be eligible for?
They're not employees, they're 1099 contract.
Right. They have no insurance.
So they don't have the insurance and they don't have the benefits?
But that's, that's something we contract with new avenues. So I'm calling...
I'm sure we could add, amend the contract.
I think it's something that's we're looking into.
Lynn, I don't disagree with your, your, whether it's chief deputy or first deputy that you came here for, but that you're basically were going on as hours here. Your problem should have been in front of us is, I don't have enough deputies, that's why I keep understanding. You didn't say that, and that's why, that's why I asked you three times, you finally did say, yeah, that's what I really need. Because you wouldn't even be worried about this chief deputy or first deputy had you not had enough deputies.
Well, yes.
So is there a better way that, I know you guys may not like it, but is there a part-time, part, you know, because this is a part-time job, if employees are willing to work less than half that and you get more workers, if 30 people would like to, interested in the job, is there any way that you can make that happen? I'm asking.
I can only send two for each session to Indianapolis for training.
Sure.
So that's four people a year I can send to get trained.
I thought, okay, I thought that was, that's four max.
Four max for a year.
Well, even if...
I have, I can send two people in the spring session, two people in the fall session.
Understand, but even if you wanted to, that's not going to change it. So is there something they can do down there to alleviate your issue that get more people in there right now?
I, I don't. If there's not positions open for the class...
I had 30 positions, yeah.
If there's not positions open in the class, no. I mean, that's, and that's the Indiana State Coroner's Association, that's not...
Right, so we've had dealt with the previous person who dealt with Indiana, and so we had talked about these issues. If you need help, you need to be talking to these people, saying, I need to send more than four people.
I've asked them. I have asked them. They said there's not room in the class, because, you know, the whole state is sending people to this, these two training sessions per year. So if they allowed everybody to send six or eight people that wanted to go...
How much is your budget for your coroner, deputy, coroner?
Deputies.
For my, for the, to pay my deputy?
Ballpark, in a year, what is your budget?
45, I think. I think it's $45,000 a, for the year for all the deputies.
I'm looking...
So some, some work more than others.
Yeah.
That's including your chief deputy, right?
Pardon me?
That's including your chief deputy.
No, that's not including the chief.
But some work, some might.
Some work.
Do one call.
Right, right.
A pay period.
Some work two days a week, some work four days a week, four shifts. Jennifer, the chief deputy primarily works the day shifts from 3:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The other deputies pick up from 6:00 PM to 3:00 AM, but they alternate. And then you get, you know, I can't work on Thursdays and Fridays. I can't work Saturdays. I.
We looked into making them part-time. Would that?
What do you mean, part-time?
Making them.
Part-time police?
Yeah.
As opposed to a 1099, is it?
First deputy.
I, I don't know, well, I don't know. I mean, I guess it would depend on what their salary as a part-time or their, you know, I don't know what difference that would make. I'm still going to be short people unless I can make it lucrative enough.
They'd be getting paid while they're on call, they'd be getting paid. I'm looking for the incentive to get people to start applying for it and be there. That's what I'm trying to.
I mean, possibly because at this point, like I said, even when they're going through training, because I can't put them out on the street by themselves, they have to be with another deputy.
I get that.
So what, what they're being paid now, which they were being paid nothing, but when you guys approved the stipend, I was like, you know, we got to give these guys something for all this training. It takes two to three months to get somebody trained out on the streets.
We're trying to find a solution to the.
And they were getting $25 or $50.
Yeah.
To train.
You're wrong in saying that. It kind of sounds like you're, you're focusing mostly on your chief deputy because that's a solution that's working right now. She's able to cover a large part of the shifts that you need to cover.
Thing I've been working on the longest. Like I said, to me, it was a win to get a stipend because they had never gotten a stipend for being on call for anything. So when I got that, I'm like, okay, here's a little movement. Now let me try to fix this chief problem. In the meantime, the people that have been working all these hours for no, no stipend, no time, you know, no, nothing, no pay while they were on call decided, gotta go.
So you, you put down here, chief deputy again, and you, but every paperwork I got here shows first deputy.
Yeah, it says first deputy.
So I don't know where you're coming up with the chief because I.
I came up with chief off of the job description.
We don't have any, we don't, all of our stuff that we have, your budget that you bring to us, first deputy.
That's because that's the way it comes to.
No, there's nothing that I see that says chief deputy. Everything that I see you have says first deputy.
Okay.
That's all I'm asking. I don't know where it comes from. So I don't see it. I don't see it in your budget. You've been giving us the budget for the last three and a half or four years, so.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So.
Right, okay.
So I don't understand what the question, what that was.
Just clarify. It's a big difference on, on anything you're coming up with pay. First deputy is what you have listed on everything you give us.
It's not.
We don't have a chief deputy. I can give you, you want to see your budget, you approve to us.
I, I, I agree. It says first deputy. I don't know why it said that, but when I took over the job, that's the way it came to me. So I assumed that.
Right, there were two first deputies.
There were two at the time. So I just figured that that's how the county listed it. The position is a chief deputy's position and that's what's listed in the job description.
Yeah, what she said. May I, may I?
Go for it and then follow.
I think we need to have a meeting just with your department because your whole department needs to be revamped.
That would be great. I'd love that.
I'm going to go restate what I initially said. Take, let's start first. Get the job description, mark it up as you need to, get it to HR. Let me know. I'll follow up and then we'll make sure that we get this, at least this first part moving along. But I also concur with comments and suggestions coming from, from the discussion earlier of the fact that maybe we really need to consider going from 1099 to part-time employee. That you will benefit from the potential from a recruitment process of the fact that if they're getting some kind of benefit, whether that be per for even to the potential of insurance, then, then we have some opportunities there.
May I? And make sure that the deputy coroner's job descriptions are updated.
It's exactly the same as the chief deputy with the exception of the training and scheduling and all that. It's the exact same thing.
Make sure it's exactly what they're doing.
More or less.
Don't make it what you want them to do.
Right.
If you want to give us or highlight it and say, this is what I wanted, so we, yeah, yeah.
Well, if their, if their job description's the same, then why wouldn't they be getting $35,000 too?
Because they are considered non-exempt, I think.
Well, so is your first deputy.
No.
Yes, he is per the salary ordinance.
Per the salary ordinance, not per the job description. That's where the, I guess the main problem started, maybe.
Okay.
I don't know, but.
So we got to.
I will get the markups done, get them to HR and we'll go from there.
And I would do it instead.
This is further than I've come in three and a half years. Thank you guys very much. I appreciate it.
Can you get us the pay grid across?
Yes, yes.
Even Stark and Porter County?
Yep. I'll get.
And the fact, and the fact if they're part-time people, full-time coroners or 1099s.
Okay.
As many places as you can talk to.
Will do.
I think you have an opportunity here to possibly get a more of a restructure of this whole thing. So compare what the neighbors are doing and get us a bunch of information.
The ones I will check are the people that are in our population summary, the same population.
Actually, it's like Marshall County and other areas. Actually, Porter County is not even close to where we are. I can give you the numbers if you want. We're 130,000. We've been 130,000 for the last 30 years.
I get that. But the ones that are considered in.
Anyway, just, can you get us the numbers to justify it like Marshall County, the areas like that too, please?
Right, population for our area is 100 to 150,000 is Clark, Delaware, LaPorte, Madison, Monroe and Vigo counties.
Those are the ones I was talking about.
All right.
All right.
Okay.
We got a plan.
In an effort to not have you up here for another 20 minutes, is there anything else?
No, I'm done.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody's racing up here.
Always take the, always take the short route. Bishop County Planner. I'm here tonight. As you know, I emailed all you regarding the community crossings grant. At part of that grant, we need to have a commitment letter signed. Before you, all right, in the email, I listed, there's two options. One option I gave was from State Road 35 to 20 along Johnson Road, roughly seven miles. And the second, after speaking with the auditor, maybe we could shorten it up a little bit, help out with the funding. Would only be going to County Road 400, 35 to 400. Roughly, the, that estimate is, I could serve the estimated $2,040,000 for that. Now, the grant covers 50% and the max is a million dollars. So naturally, I just want to, I want to get over $2 million in total cost. And then the second option was a seven-mile option between 20 and 35. That was seven miles and that was roughly 2.6 million. So county would be responsible for 1.6 and the grant would cover a million in that case. I'm leading up to you. I know budgets are tight. Then I spoke to Charity and she was fine with using MVH funds to cover the 50% of the $2 million. But if we want the, the option of 35 to 20, there would be an additional roughly 500 to 600,000 that had to be covered somewhere else, somewhere else.
So part of the process is going in front of the commission and having approval of the proposal, right?
Well, they, this happens every year. This is just a commitment letter for an application.
Matching funds. For matching funds, but so.
Just for application purposes.
Are we circumventing the process of going, of deciding on an option tonight?
This is the way it's done the last nine years.
Yeah, we got to sign the letter regardless. Just wanted to make sure, Mr. Yagalski.
So you mentioned the Johnson Road project, so those that do not do or do know, we totally messed that whole project up in the first place. Johnson Road does not have a good base. If we do any type of improvement, we have to do a whole, total structure of the base. Johnson Road was designed and built for horse and buggies back in the day and they go through people's property. And what happened was we had a $7 million grant that was offered to us for, for Johnson Road about 15 years ago. But unfortunately, it goes through people's homes and that kind of stuff because of the way that, over the years, things were built on it. So what happened was they surveyed, they sent the surveyors out and the surveyors went in people's front yard and they put stakes right in their window, in their window. And we had an outcry of public hatred towards all the commissioners at the time. So we, we, we just basically had to give up on the project. We had to give up the $7 million. That's just a little bit of history of it right now. There is no good solid base. We'd have to dig down a good three foot to get down to where you actually have to go and reinvent the wheel. So if we don't understand that, and I hope they guys, you guys do, all you're doing is putting camouflage in the road. Road, the road is a problem. It's been a problem. There's been areas of wet lands underneath there and stone and so forth where the peat moss has taken over underneath it and so on and so forth. Unfortunately, I got too much history of this one, but the long story short of it is, is if we can't figure out a good thing with Johnson Road, I particularly don't want to hear it because it, it needs to be revamped and that's, that's a huge undertaking.
I know about nine years ago, it was our first community crossing project and at that time, we only milled and filled two inches. This, this would cover, we're doing two lifts, so we're doing a whole new intermediate lay and also a surface lay. So that this should actually improve it and it should last longer than nine years.
You're talking Johnson Road?
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to disagree with you. We have a subset, we have a sub area that's the problem, but.
Yeah, there was, there was area where we fixed, I think, nine years ago, it was by 500 by Summit Farm. We went, we dug deeper there. And you, you will notice that that road, that location is a lot better. There's a lot, there's a lot less transverse cracks and longitudinal cracks in that area.
What is the pavement rating of each of these? Are they all bad, equally bad?
Yeah, the paser is, well, it breaks up, you know, in certain segments.
On average?
Yeah, it's, it's in the fours, three, four.
Okay, and those are the priority ones because they're particularly low? Or there are other ones that?
Well, that, AADT, so the traffic counts. It is the most, is busiest road in LaPorte County unincorporated.
When do you determine which one you're going to submit? Or you submit all three?
No, I, this is, well, we had a conversation with highway staff and we looked at the roads and what we've done in the last five, 10 years and what needs done. And we look at the paser ratings of the roadways and how much it's going to cost to fix the road, get it up to at least a paser, a nine or 10. And then longevity of that. How long, how long, once we do an improvement, how long will it last? More bang for the dollar, whether it be chip or seal, crack seal, milling fill, how, how deep the milling fill, et cetera.
In the professional opinion of you and the other highway department staff, which one would you prefer if costs were not the primary focus? Because we're going to be paying for one of these no matter what, or we're going to pay for all of them at some point.
Right. I think we can get by with the cheaper one, 400 to 35. That section between 420, I think it could be put off. We could maybe do that the following year. Hopefully, but, you know, might be additional money available at will tax or something to subsidize a match at that time.
Motion to approve. Adam signing the letter.
I have a motion from Mr. No.
Which one? That's, that's a highway and the commissioner's decision, so.
Well, yeah.
So if I'm signing a letter, does it assign, does that letter actually have the subject of what project it is?
Yeah, it does.
What does that, which one does it say?
Well, the, the $2 million one that says Johnson Road 400 North to State Road 35.
That's the one I have in front of me in the email.
And I just add that to the application.
And that is, the obligation of the county would be $1,042,530. It's closest to 50/50 as we got.
You still got to bid it. It might came in lower than that, but yeah.
Okay.
So. Got a motion.
So is that motion amended to this project specifically?
I'm letting them decide the project.
That's what I gave you. That's fine, yes.
I'm assuming they all.
I mean, in a way, we're limiting which your choices are based off of how much money we're willing to commit to it, so.
We're not committing a dollar. We're, well.
We have to get, receive the grant.
Once we sign the letter and submit the application, we're going to go do it.
Because if I sign all three letters, I mean, potentially that it's over $3 million.
No, it's the same roadway.
You're only getting a grant on one.
Yeah. So I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
And the motion is to approve you signing the cheapest one?
The letter that he has.
Letter I have in front of.
He has one.
Funny commitment for paving of Johnson Road from County Rowood 400 North to State Road 35.
Yes.
All right.
Can you state the amount that's on there?
So the total amount for the estimated amount of the project is $2,042,530, leaving LaPorte County's obligation to be $1,042,530.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of me assigning the letter, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Can I have your letter?
Thanks.
It's no problem.
Easy.
Yeah, it was bugging me too. Why'd you let it go so long?
What was that about? You hiding?
Uh huh.
Can't say shoot it.
Good evening. Steve Ira, adult probation. So I'm here because there were two positions that I was approved by the judges to approach the personnel committee about updating. One was the Michigan City Support Staff going from a Comet four to a Comet five. They brought that to the meeting and I think there was a question about who's paying for it came up and it was kind of put off. Is that correct? Lynn was here? Yeah. At the same time, we submitted, we have a part-time secretary in LaPorte who is effectively doing the same job as that person in Michigan City, the Comet four. To bring, we want to bring that person to a full-time basis. And the full-time salary is going to be, drum roll, $44,699 based on the numbers right now. The benefits would be another $84,25 on top of it. Total expense in the neighborhood of $53,000. We have a probation administrative fund that we've been not using since two of my officers went to lit. But we would like to use that fund to cover the cost of moving that position to a full-time position as well as moving the Michigan City up to a Comet five. And the reason why we're pushing for Comet five is our, our people that are on probation come in and make payments called probation user fees. And those monies have to be taken to the bank, but they also have to be received. And right now, the support staff in each town, there's a Comet four and a Comet five. So when the Comet five goes on vacation, is sick, whatever the situation, Comet four can't really take that money. So we need to have that coverage in both towns. So I brought this in front of the judges back in January and we finally had a meeting about it in April and the judges said, yes, we can, we confer. As a matter of fact, I could read it to you. They basically said that we all agree that Mr. Ira can go to the council and request the, those two positions be moved to be paid out of administrative funds.
So regardless of the funds, did you get a favorable recommendation from the job evaluation committee to go from four to a five?
Yes. And that was at the last council meeting. For the, for the existing four in Michigan City to go to a five.
Understood the question.
From what I understand.
You had tabled it to be discussed at budgetary.
I think we voted, I think we voted on it, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the first position. Second one is going part-time to full-time.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Yagalski.
Yeah, it talked, that just has nothing to do with your department and what you guys are doing, but we've got a hiring freeze in there for 15 years. We are now sitting in a situation that we got to watch, we're doing very carefully, as you all know. And just because you, you forgot about that money and now we can use that money means that we should be using that money for county government, not to say, okay.
No, you can't.
Here's our future for other things. It could be, it could be in the future for some in your department, but we, we got, we cannot allow ourselves to get in a situation that we have here with hiring people. We've gone through this. We, we need to decrease employment, not increase employment here in LaPorte County. So the only way that we can, we can give you guys the raises that you guys want, all you, your fives, fours and all that.
Right.
Is to do that because we don't have growth in LaPorte County. We just discussed that before you came up there. Population's been the same. You've been here for as long as I have. You know how the population is.
Well, I'm not quite that old, but yeah.
You're close. You're close.
Bottom line is, you're correct. You're absolutely correct. However, the mechanism for paying this is outside of that discussion because it's probation fees. We have currently today, I think 152,000 in the, in that account. So we can, we can take care of the salary as well as the benefits for this individual.
Anyway, you know how I feel about it.
And I understand that, what you're saying.
We've had discussion, you and I have plenty of times in the past, especially when we use that fund. So I can tell you, I know about the fund as much as you do.
Yes, you do.
So no, I don't, I'm sorry, I just don't agree with you, but it's okay.
That's okay.
I'm, I'm generally fairly leery about reclassifications because right now, as it stands, we have six Comet levels and almost everybody is a four, five or six.
Right.
With very few exceptions. And so as we continue to move people closer and closer to the six, which most department heads want to do because it means it's more pay for their employees, which is the primary goal that they're trying to accomplish. It just kind of defeats the whole purpose of the classification system. So you mentioned that the differentiating factor here, if I'm understanding correctly, is that they're able to take payments, right? Is that the thing that makes them a Comet five?
Posits, all those things.
And that's, that's the only factor that?
Five.
Okay.
Now, there, there are nuances and they're different jobs. But effectively, that would allow that person to be able to do that when the other person is off. And the reason why there was a nuance in the job descriptions and the way they handle things was largely because of that.
Where does that come from? Because when I'm looking at the Comet grid, there's no mention of, of taking money or, or payment processing or anything related to money in this. So I don't, I don't know where this comes from.
Came from, so.
Is that the only change? The, just the pay?
Yeah. So. Well, the salaries.
But the job description is that for these two people are the same except for that right now? Didn't you just say no?
No, they're not, they're not identical right now.
Then I don't understand why job evaluation committee would have said, okay.
Well, they, they didn't bring this, they brought the five to six or the four to five. See, you got me talking about that. They brought, they approved the four to five to come in front of you, which was at last month's meeting. But they didn't move forward the, the, the option of moving a part-time person into a full-time position. So I'm bringing that up tonight as well.
So the matter at hand is whether this position should be a four or a five.
Yeah.
Correct. Are there other?
City one, yeah.
Are there other positions in other locations that are the same thing getting, what are they classified as?
You know about Juvenile? I know Juvenile has two support staff in each town.
One of the core principles of our salary classification system is that like job duties get like pay regardless of the department they're in. And so I guess I wonder whether or not this is consistent across all of our county departments or even within your own department before we change it to a Comet five.
Yeah.
You're just speaking of the one.
Yeah, that one in particular.
Right.
Okay, the ones in Juvenile that collect money are Comet fives. That's probably what it came from. And this has been as long as I've been around, so, you know.
You said you weren't there.
Back in the 1800s. Sorry, Mark, I missed what you said.
Waiting to say something.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't be opposed if we, we have other work before Wagner, Owen and Shealy right now. I wouldn't be opposed if this got sent to them for. I wouldn't be opposed if this got sent to them for another look as well.
Okay. I mean, besides that, I don't see any other action that we can take at this point. I mean, we've discussed what we wanted to do with budget when it came to the other positions. What else could we do, besides put it in front of Wagner, Irwin and Shealy?
Yeah.
I mean, realistically, I mean, there's a number of things we could do. We decide to approve it right now. But that's not, I don't think that's the direction this board is wanting to go right now.
Yeah. Personally, I'd be a no, but if Wagner, Irwin and Shealy, who's the preeminent experts on this topic, they've designed our system, they're the ones who make recommendations on it, they do it for dozens of other counties. If they think it should be reclassified, then I'd be okay with that.
Yeah, I don't feel comfortable with it.
Okay. So now, now we're talking about the four to the five, or are we talking about the part-time to a five?
Both.
Mark, we know where you come from.
Justin, thoughts? There was your recommendation about Wagner, Irwin and Shealy.
Did you have them look at both?
Had to look at both.
Sure.
That doesn't solve us part-time to a full-time.
No.
I just would like to add that in.
Mr. Schuster.
12 years of unification, we've gone through 10 part-time people. As soon as they hit their 90-day mark, they're jumping to the clerk's office or to different offices. So we're spending a ton of money on training, getting them to where they need to be, just for them to jump ship. And not all of them have gone to other county positions, but we've gone through 10 in 12 years, I believe.
And let alone the support staff that there, that is there, that is responsible for training that person, bringing them up to grade to where they can do that job, only to have to go ahead and do it again in nine months.
So I'm not sure what happened at the Personnel Committee, but I know two of you that were there that I thought said it was a no-brainer. I think Mr. Pressle quoted it.
Yep.
So you say it's not ready for a vote, and I'm not doubting maybe the classification, but part-timer to a full-timer, I think is your decision, is it not?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It is. I think we all in the Job Evaluation Committee saw the need that you guys are proposing, that it's causing issues on your side collecting payments, which is, I'm assuming, pretty bad for your downstream of people being able to come in when they're off work, or whatever that need is.
Thoughts? Recommendations?
The other caveat that you have to add to this before, before we move forward, if we're even moving forward tonight, is the fact that if that fund dries up, and we've said this before, and Mr. Yagowski, if he said it once, he said it a bunch of times.
I don't remember.
When the money goes, the person goes. So it's, you know, just like with grants. But is what happens is, the fund goes short, and then you're coming to us, because, you know, we gotta keep this person.
It just happened last year.
Right. Because he's, Mr. Yagowski's absolutely right. We have no room in the budget to be adding employees, especially full-time employees that are entitled to benefits and stuff.
Right.
I mean, the insurance, we already gotta add another million dollars to insurance, so that's what we're looking at, so.
So we would agree with you. If we run out of money, then the position will be gone.
What is the replenishment rate typically on that?
Position that we, that they did.
On that fund, that'll be?
We're pulling in about $53,000 a year.
So the?
So I calculated it'll be.
I just, I'm not.
And just so you know, those are the first monies we have to take when we take the user fees, the monthly fee, but there's an administrative fee that is the very first thing we have to take.
Yeah. And business is good? Business is good?
Business is good. So in, yeah.
I guess for you guys, yeah.
So Mark, in 2043, we'll be coming back, because that's when I predict we'll bottom out.
And he'll still be in office.
He'll be here.
He'll be here.
Yeah, I'm not gonna be here.
So, this is not personal, it really isn't. It's, here's the situation. If people take vacations or take days off, I understand that, and there's people, we have to move around to go collect money for the day, or whatever, because you collect money at the end of the day, you don't collect money the whole day.
No, either they do.
You're allowed to collect money, but you're supposed to be, the person's supposed to go and evaluate, count the money, then deposit. They don't have to be there all day. The six does not have to be, or five doesn't have to be there all day.
But five, in order to collect the fees, and probationers come in throughout the day to make payments.
Okay.
It's not just deposits, it's.
There's all that stuff. So we can, we can always move people around. We have to get better at what we're doing. I'm not disagreeing with you, but we gotta get better at what we're doing, otherwise.
That's right.
We're gonna run out of money. We're gonna run out of money very quickly. And you guys know the story, I'm not telling you that you don't need to know. Long and short of it is, we move people around to go put that five that day over there and to collect money, I guess, if that's the case.
Or. Let's say, let's say that Lane here in LaPorte is off. That would mean that Chris Baskey in Michigan City would have to come over and take payments, as well as make deposits for both towns, and take payments in Michigan City too.
But then you surely don't move everybody up to a five to get that. If you move one person up to a five, then you got another person in Michigan City, or you got another person in LaPorte. But you don't have to have moved four people up to a five.
But the.
You're overreaching, Stephen, this, I'm sorry.
We only have two that are full fives.
Now that can accept money?
Two that are fives.
Two that are fives that can accept money?
One in Michigan City, one in LaPorte.
Okay.
So, yeah, you're right, but if somebody, if the Michigan City person leaves, is on vacation, then we can't take the money in Michigan City. So the LaPorte person who's taking money in LaPorte, I don't know how we can expect her to go to Michigan City and back to LaPorte and collect payments from both towns at the same time.
So how's it worked for the last 10 years, Steve?
We make do.
Okay, see, that's my point. There's always a way to do things, but we can always say we can't. So it's worked for 10 years, but it won't work tomorrow.
So, yeah, but the question is, State Board of Accounts comes in and says, well, how come this force can't collect money?
All right, all right. So this conversation is getting way too.
I'm gonna make a motion that we refer this to Wagner, Irwin and Shealy with the other mentors that are pending before them right now, and we wait for their recommendation on this.
Including the part-timer to both of them?
Yeah, both positions that you have in question. And I'd just ask also, in the future, when you have something that's more complicated like this, ask to put it on the agenda, because then when we know it's on there, and two, it gives a chance.
Discussion.
Well, it gives a chance for some of us to ask questions before the meeting. A lot of the reason I'm on the fence is there's just more questions, and we're an hour and 20 minutes into this meeting, and we're halfway through the first page of the agenda.
Usually spend better part of my Friday and better part of Monday.
There's a lot of phone calls.
Calling people.
Yeah.
So, second. So I have a motion in a second.
I just like, I would like to suggest that you direct the HR director to make those requests. Direct her to contact Irwin, Shealy.
I already have Doug.
Wagner and Shealy.
I mean.
Or who are you?
He's already working with Wagner, Irwin and Shealy.
Who did you want to make this contact?
You were volunteering?
I'm trying to stay in my lane. I volunteered, I volunteered on one thing, because I wanted to make sure.
Send it off, and to let us know once it's been sent off, too, like a.
So if our 11th part-time person leaves during this time, just so be it.
11th?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, is it nothing?
And no disrespect, but you just told, you told the coroner, we'll look into hiring more part-time people.
I didn't, they did.
I'm just saying.
Don't look at me, I didn't say a word.
But we're trying to cut positions, you're telling us, but you just told her, we're looking, we'll look.
Full-time position.
For the organization.
Paying for that the taxpayers are not gonna pay for. That makes no sense, Steve.
And that's, and that's why it's.
Sure.
Got it.
It's an app.
So who's sending the request to Wagner?
I will send it to HR to get it involved with Wagner, Irwin and Shealy.
CC me, will you?
Yes, will.
All right.
Can you make sure he has all the paperwork on it, though?
I have no clue.
Absolutely.
Job descriptions, all that stuff?
The whole work. Well, I figure I worked.
Lesser from, lesser from.
Well, HR should.
2004.
Have all of that. Well, you'll see the initial conversation, we'll work it from there. So I have a motion in a second. Let's finish this out with a vote. All in favor of me contacting HR to contact Wagner, Irwin and Shealy to manage this part-time and classification change, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Five, two.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Apologize for taking so much time.
Thanks, Steve. Other department heads?
Yes.
Good evening. John Link, Superior Four Magistrate. I'm here, as I told you I'd be back, requesting additional funding for an approval, a vote of approval for the funding for psychological evaluations. I currently have $7,550 in outstanding bills that we owe, and I'm asking for $10,000. Hopefully, that will take us through the rest of the year. It may not. It just, I can't give you a good idea or feel. They come in waves, it seems like. Usually, it's not consistent throughout the year, but I'm hoping that will get us through the end of the year.
Where did, where did you have that coming out of, remember? Where was it supposed to come out of the?
We have a budget for, we have a budget item for psychological evaluations.
Correct.
But it's running short.
But it's running short, so where did, did you request it out of somewhere? I'm asking.
No, I did not ask.
Motion of support, because it's not on the agenda.
That's the best we can do.
That's okay, just make sure.
Motion of support.
So a motion of support from Mr. Novak. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yagowski. Any further discussion? All in favor of motion, support, $10,000 for psychological services, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, very much. Have a good evening.
Any additional department heads? All right, department heads, department head reports closed. Liaison reports. Mr. Pressle?
Get it going, I'll keep it short, since we're running pretty, pretty long already. Maintenance, we've met a few times here, moving forward with our scopes on plumbing and HVAC for all the county buildings. Building up our staff. Angie's doing a great job of getting some new people in here to fill some empty positions that are much needed to keep up on some stuff around here. Plan Commission, our area plan, our comprehensive plan is underway. We have different select groups meeting to talk housing, utilities, infrastructure, school systems, different areas to get some input to see what they all want to have in the comp plan. And that's all I've got for you.
All right. Mr. Yagowski?
None at this time.
Mr. Mullenauer?
None at this time.
Mr. Keel?
None at this time. I'll keep us moving.
Mr. Yaganovak?
I'll pass.
Mr. Kessler?
Guess it's consistent.
And I'll follow it up. All right.
Don't feel bad, Jim.
Way to go, Jimmy. Way to go.
I had to give you something.
Man. Correspondents?
You have seen all the correspondents, so there's nothing to worry about.
You have seen all the correspondents, there's nothing to worry about that we needed to report to public.
All right, one thing that we did have, just worthwhile, is an individual reaching out from Michigan City, Long Beach area, that if you call your attention, every one of you should have the email regarding some concerns with assessments.
And the issue really resolves at the state level, after you see, follow through the email, so it's nothing on us in our county, so.
And we are following, I've spoken with Mike, the two Mikes, him and Mike Schultz, and we're gonna make sure that if there's anything we can do, we'll do.
There'll be a continued discussion with our representatives, et cetera, down the state.
Yep.
Thank you. We have no ordinances, resolutions, we have no old business, so moving on to new business. LaPorte County Building Maintenance Director requesting permission for two full-time maintenance positions.
Permission.
Hey.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion approved, a second. Any comments?
We sit in a meeting, I'm in, if I'm jumping the gun, I'm sorry, but.
Any discussion from council? All in favor of approval of these two positions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm not voting no, but abstain, because one of the employees, she might hire as a.
Got it. I got the abstention, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Yagowski. Thank you. Port County Order requesting permission to hire a full-time clerk.
It's a replacement position. We had an accounts payable clerk take a position, a new position, working less hours, more money. You can't blame her. And, but however, this is a crucial position for us. She does a lot of dual work, and we have a lot of internal controls that goes through her. Somebody else does it, she's the reviewer, or vice versa. So it's a critical role for us.
Okay. Mr. Yagowski?
I want your allow question here. Mike, what's the opportunity at some point to reduce the staff, when we have done that once before? We have a tough, a few years back, we also did with the clerk's office, too. Reduce the staff by one on this particular position. Now, I understand if this one's important, that that person, you know, you could fill that more important job, I understand that, but can we, with the idea that we were cross-training and getting people from different departments when you guys needed them, and so on and so forth, is there ability to us to reduce the staff by one on this particular issue? Not the person, but a clerk?
We possibly have some people coming up for retirement in the next year or so, and that would be a better time to, we can certainly look to do that, or bring, or use part-timers instead of full-timers in the future. We've been looking at that already, but this, unfortunately, this is not one of those good positions to do.
That's why I asked the question.
But the answer is, I believe that there might, will be an opportunity possibly in a year.
I will, with Mike's assurance, I will make a motion to accept it.
All right. It's a motion approved by Mr. Yagowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pressle. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Page two. Port County Treasurer requesting permission to hire second deputy replacement. Mr. Barney?
Evening, Council. Dan Barney, the Port County Treasurer. We had one of our employees transfer to a different office, so we have an opening in our second deputy position.
Which office is this in right now? Is this second deputy in Michigan City or LaPorte?
Michigan City.
Okay. Now, as we discussed earlier, you look like there's high opportunity that this position could be backfilled by.
Yes, we have a very qualified person who has a position right underneath the second deputy that would be willing to move up and is capable of doing that position very well.
This is the bookkeeper or clerk?
Bookkeeper, correct.
Question, are we gonna reduce then the second person who moves up to this one?
Yes, that's up to discussion in the council.
I make a motion that we accept this move here, but with the caveat that the second person would go away at that, from employment purposes.
So you're saying eliminate the bookkeeper position?
Yes. Yes.
We only have five people in two offices.
I know, trust me, we, you and I had this discussion about the fives, your classifications, and what they don't go to Michigan City and don't want to go to Michigan City, so I don't want to discuss that conversation right now, but that's my motion.
All right. So I have a motion for the sake of conversation. Do I have a second?
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Motion would be that we would, we would be okay with the increase to put the person into the higher position, but the second job that the person's coming from would go away. Which would be a bookkeeper.
All right. So discussion. I guess my first question is, does that violate anything when it comes to collection of money, to where there's only one person in the office?
Yeah, you only have one person in the Michigan City office.
So is there anybody that could move from the, from the LaPorte office to the Michigan City office?
Well, no, in the LaPorte office, we have a line out the door when we're collecting now. So if you take someone else out, it's gonna create a longer line, less customer service.
Okay.
You have five people dealing with $65,000 bills that we mail out every year. That's a lot. Put on five people. The office used to have seven, you dropped it to five, so.
We're agreeing that, that when you put in the mail out, we, and many times, brought other departments in. I can name all the people that were in a past position there, that brought people in to help do the mailing. We don't expect you to do that. We want to cross-train people. We want to have people come and help you out. The person that was, that had done it before was Kenny Layton. He started out, and we all went in there, and we all did tax bills. So everybody got together, and they put the tax bills out. Everybody doesn't remember that, I can remind the person who did it, that was Kenny Layton. After that, we've done the same thing. If they need help, we'll bring people in, that's what we want cross-training for, and that's what we, that was the purpose of it.
Okay.
Mr. Yagowski, would you entertain the idea of having, converting that bookkeeper into something that was like a hourly position during tax collection season, so he's not short-staffed, causing backlogs?
Yeah, you can bring people in, part-time, anytime you want.
Like a temporary position?
Absolutely. If he needs help, we'll help. That's the idea of doing this type of thing.
Yeah, you explain to us your part-time budget, how that works during tax collection season, and whether or not this idea is feasible.
We have two part-time people in our budget for tax season now. And we got it done. I mean, last season, we, obviously, May, we did a good job, so. But we also have, you know, five in the staff. Five is not very many people. From the amount of phone calls we take, and the amount of people come to our customers, don't forget, we do liquor permits and, and mobile home permits, so it's not like they're not doing work.
So you remember that, Mr. Schultz has people part-time trained to, to do the, come and help, he's helped out in the past also. So we've had a great cross-training, and that's working well. Yes, I would absolutely.
Not just this tax time only, it's all year. Not just this tax time only, it's all year.
I would absolutely have no problem with during the time bringing a part-time person, and if that's what he needs, that's fine, but we need to get that, that job class that you have over in LaPorte, into Michigan City anyway. I got brought up before.
Any other questions or?
I'm not, I'm not 100% sold on Mr. Yagowski's motion yet. I'm open to it. How about we proceed with not filling the bookkeeper position, and take the next month to look into it more? Give us a rundown of what you think the impact is to your office, what it's going to be during tax season, your recommendation for how we proceed. We can poke and prod it a little bit more and decide more permanently at the next meeting. Would that be agreeable?
Yeah, absolutely. We can vote on it at the next meeting, that's fine.
All right, so do we want to amend?
Amended to, that the second position, we'll refer to it at the time, and we'll rethink it at the time.
Okay.
Next month. Next month.
You good with the amendment? This is the second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the replacement for the second deputy, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Rosenbaum, can you add that to the agenda, like preemptively? Thank you.
All right, next item is approval of employee insurance rates. In your packet, you'll see a few different examples and different grids that were provided by the auditor's office.
So due to the change of insurance effective October 1st, we need to input the new rates because the next pay period, it starts. So therefore, you have both the employees that were employed before July 1st, 2025, and those after 2025, so you have two schedules, and that's what you have in front of you that needs to be approved. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Yagowski. So in the past, it was always a solid, we couldn't do it because, get our rates in time and for budget purposes, so is this going to be a set rate that we're going to have next year, or the year after, or the year after that?
It's a set rate for 12 months until?
Where's the 12-month at? Where's the 12, when will we get that?
It ends at 9:30.
So, so. At 9:30 of this, next year, so we'll have time to budget it then.
It's my understanding with the new company, with changing at the end, 1st of October, it's, it's switching to Anthem is number one. That's going to be our budget year then?
Yeah.
With the insurance?
Yeah.
A renewal?
Yes.
Yeah, so this should put us right on.
That allows us to get the information early enough.
Right, correct.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, motion approved. Motion approved by Mr. Yagowski. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Mullenauer. Any discussion?
Yeah, what is the percentage increase to employees? Like their premiums?
I can only tell you that the overall premiums have gone up 10.15%. I don't, obviously, they only get 15 or 20% of that increase.
Yeah, but I mean, it's still 10%.
Okay, but it's cheaper than if we.
However, and the other, the other caveat is, is that the other insurance is starting on January 1st, the, if they have dental or any of those, those are actually going to be decreased, and you're going to find better benefits on those. So it's not a wash, but it helps temper this increase.
What about the clinic? Because that's a major component of how people pick plans. I know there's been talk about discontinuing Franciscan, not Franciscan, sorry, North Shore. Francis.
Okay, I'd rather Guy speak about that, please, thank you.
Yeah, so I'm negotiating the contract right now and reviewing it, and Franciscan's going to come on board at the first of the year.
That's good, that's good. Does, does that?
Which is more, which is actually a better continuity, because, you know, Franciscan's the largest healthcare provider in LaPorte County and Porter County, so.
So when this change was modeled, does it save us money, or will it cost more than before?
It's going to save, it looks like it's going to save money.
Even with the loss of the federal prescription subsidies?
Yes.
Okay.
And they're, well, that's what they tell us, we'll have to review it, but also with their formulary, their formulary is going to be a lot different.
Has the Franciscan contract been approved already?
No.
No, okay. Is this going to require an additional appropriation, the insurance benefit or package change?
Not likely, because the cost is supposed to be lower.
Sorry, going back to the Anthem.
I'm sorry, Anthem? Say that again.
Since it's starting in October 1st, is there going to need to be an additional appropriation? Because this is now more expensive.
We're dealing with that tonight.
Okay.
It's on the, it's on the agenda.
Part of the money is.
Oh, okay, so we have a separate, sorry.
It's not, not all of it is just for, under, you know, under budgeting, it is, part of it is dealing with that tonight.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Yagowski. Mr. DiMartino, the two things that I know that were at least major issues is, if you don't like your doctor, you know, you're kind of stuck with him. So if we're going to, if people just want to go in for a clinic, they can, they can still use a regular doctor, right? I'm asking.
But it won't be at the employee clinic, because the employee clinic's going to be staffed by different providers, but they'll still be able, so, so say you have Dr. X, I mean, Dr. X is not, doesn't have office hours at the employee clinic.
Right, so if I have a, if I have a doctor that I'm using at St. Francis, at Franciscan, sorry, it's not St. Anthony's, Franciscan, and I decide to go in and use this clinic, I can do both, I can have my doctor, still keep my doctor and go use the clinic?
Yes.
Because that's the case, it wasn't the case before.
Well, I mean, so you can go and use the clinic, and based on clinic, but you don't have to give up your doctor.
Okay, and the other part of it was, a lot of people had these different prescriptions, and they wouldn't honor them because they said they, they, they were not entitled to them. Have those things been straightened out a little bit? I think you and I talked about one of the individuals herself.
Right, so Franciscan is going to have a formulary, and if you're talking about, if you're talking about the diabetes medication.
Yes, sir, I am.
Used for weight loss, that's not on their formulary.
Okay, this wasn't for late loss, this was diabetes medicine they would not honor before, so that was the problem. I had two employees that had issues with that.
Well, they didn't honor it because it was on the formulary. So if your doctor writes a prescription, and you can't get it filled out at the employee clinic, you're going to have to go to your Walgreens or your CVS and do it under your healthcare plan.
Okay.
Even if it's written by somebody at the employee clinic.
Agreed, but under the old program, they wouldn't even allow that, to two employees that were denied because of that, but, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Clarifying that comment, so you're saying that Franciscan will provide us discounted pharmacy rates, as opposed to if they were to go to a Walgreens or a CVS or something?
A limited number of.
Yes, it's a, it's a, it's a limited formulary.
Not an open-ended, I think there's 200 and something.
Yeah.
It's a pretty extensive list.
If you have like additional documentation about how this is supposed to work, I'd love to read it.
Sure.
All right, so I've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the employee rates as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Appropriations, transfers, and requests. LaPorte County Sheriff requesting permission to spend from the asset forfeiture account in the amount of $90,000.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Novak.
I just want to say, thank you.
We haven't voted yet.
Haven't voted yet.
Hey.
I rescind and I'll back away.
All in favor of the, of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you for your very detailed email explaining this as well.
That helps a lot.
That speeds it up.
Yes, exactly.
All right. Port County Maintenance requesting additional appropriation for building repairs from either Riverboat or Lit Economic Development in the amount of $360,000.
Council, you just took the lead from Sheriff Heeg. Let's get a motion. We discussed at length last month, this is, this is the money that I told you that was coming down the pike, and that we would present this month.
Is this?
So Mr. Keel, if you need to ask questions, go ahead and ask them.
Thank you. Wait, I think I run the meeting.
Does this make us even? I mean, does this catch us up?
It's going to be, well, no, because you're going to need to fund the next couple months.
No, I, I, I'm talking.
Yes, I've received six more invoices today, though, that I forwarded on to the auditor's office that literally came into my office today.
Ballpark. Ballpark, Ralph? Was that a?
Oh, we got them this afternoon.
Thanks, and pass them on.
No, literally, they, kind of, I was like, a little.
My question, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Yagowski.
Last month, I agreed to allow them to go off of, my vote, to go off, off of, I think it was Riverboat, doesn't matter, but this month, they were supposed to post this as also the $100,000 she has in her 100 accounts, and the money that we have in the, in the Michigan City project.
Okay, um, due to your request on this cash flow sheet, you have a suggestion here to transfer $125,000 to pay up to $125,000 from those three accounts that have available funds. So if you wish to do that, and then reduce the amount that you need to take from fresh funds, you may do that first, and then do the second part, but I gave you the option that you requested.
Okay, that paper supersedes this one here, though, our agenda, it only says Riverboat, and?
Yes, because a transfer doesn't need to be on the agenda.
Okay.
We just didn't put it on here because we had to figure out exactly where there were some funds available from.
Okay, so in last month's packet, we got a copy of all of the invoices that were being requested that we fund. This month, in our packet, there was a very small handful of them, and then a couple hours before our meeting, we got more of them, but still not all of them, so when, when will we be able to get a copy of all of the invoices that we're actually approving tonight? Because I haven't seen them all, I mean, like the actual invoices.
It's only a few, it's just the total.
Why don't we have all of them?
The email went out with all of them, I think.
It's not all, they don't add up.
Those are spreadsheets, that's not, those weren't.
They didn't.
So they're not individual invoices?
We gave you a spreadsheet last month.
There's a few attached, but.
So what I hear, so what everybody's referring to, right, email with nine different documents in there, looks like two of them are individual invoices, the remaining seven are summaries to different, to different vendors, based on which, I would say, which location they're coming from, is probably my best assessment here. Now, I went from everything that's not paid, along with the $15,000 of invoices that were in our packet, and the total I came up with, 444,204 is being unpaid. Does that sound directionally correct? Because I was just quickly adding up numbers off of these spreadsheets in those invoices.
I'm going to make the statement, it's possible, because you remember, we had to go to appropriations a few weeks ago, so some things have come in since, and they may have been included to show you where we are at currently.
Many of these are from August.
I understand that they may have older dates on them, but it doesn't mean that we get them.
Those are summary sheets that are showing the full amounts. What I'm looking for is the specific invoices, because I want to know, what was it spent on, and who did it go to? Because part of the problem here is, is what was the work that, that went over the budget? So I'm trying to understand.
It's, it's who.
On the header.
It's who it went to.
On the header, it says.
Half of it.
Okay, but it doesn't say what's for.
No, it does not give you the detail of the work.
It's the invoice number and who, who it went to.
Correct.
So I totaled up about 172,000 that came in the emails a couple hours ago, and then another roughly, what, 15,000 in the packet?
It's 15,358.70.
So about 187 in total that, that we've actually seen the invoices for. So I'm cool with appropriating up to 187, but the rest, I want to see before we, before we fund it.
We had close to 336 was the last number I had, is that correct, Guy?
Yes, but what Mr. Keel's saying, there's no supporting invoices to these numbers that are on the information that was sent.
The detailed invoices, like the.
The underlying invoices.
Those six, what invoices you saw today, that's what he's looking for.
Okay.
Okay, is that your motion?
Do you think you're going to find them?
Are they looking, or?
I'm not sure what happened. You think you might have them?
No, I just grabbed the folder that I thought had some stuff in it. It has some invoices, but it may be duplicate of what you've already seen, and therefore, I'd rather not waste your time.
So I.
It's our way now.
If there's an objection, I'd make a motion to approve, say 190, just to be generous, to round it out, and wait for the rest of the invoices to come in.
Okay, so I have a motion for $190,000.
Let me ask you this.
I would ask.
I would ask.
I'm sorry, looking for a second, so we can have a discussion.
I'll second for a discussion.
All right.
Apologize.
Mr. Yagowski.
Mr. Keel, if you can see the stuff before next meeting, would you also make a motion of support for the remainder amount of bill, which I could accept, and then you can go in anytime you want, if you want to look at it, or give, or they can give to you, or however, however you receive them, but I'd like to see at least, these people, these vendors out here don't deserve to be robbed from, because of LaPorte County. So I would ask that you at least take your first part of the motion, but the second part of the motion, with you going through the, that we would, that we put a motion of support for the remainder of part of the bills.
Well, the invoices that we have right now that are available to us, I mean, those are all getting covered, so whatever's remaining is probably stuff that's fairly recent, right?
I know, they're invoices that we already have. I, like I said, I received six today.
But if there are ones that we already had, they should have been easy.
360 didn't come in as part of the six.
Or some of those bills we have, they're old bills.
Pardon? On the, on the spreadsheets that I'm looking at right now, everything appears to be like August.
Yeah, I concur.
The information appears to be August. August 12, August 10.
So the, so the 190 would cover the majority of old ones.
I'm not sure where the 190 number came from, but I'm not sure I'm right.
Probably pretty close.
That was the 172 plus 15 plus a little.
The one that he sent out today, totals.
I thought it was 300 and change, not 400.
It's 360,000, according to this, DiMartino. You think 190 or 200, is there a number you think that would, that would at least get everybody some bills current?
Yeah, so they're not on a, they're not more than 30 days.
Right.
It will be by next month, they'll be 60 days.
I understand that, but that's better than we have been doing. So would that number, would 200 be a number?
I know.
That would get us there? What number would get us there?
I think, I think it would be close, yes. I think that would be reasonable.
So, he says he thinks 200 would make a number, which would only 10,000 more, would you go with that motion?
In talking with Councilman Novak, I'm willing to amend my motion if we can have all of the invoices by the end of the week. If you can promise to have the entire thing delivered by the end of the week, then I'll prove the full amount. I'd make a motion to that.
What do you think of that?
But if they're not there by the end of the week, nothing. Then it comes back next month.
So here's what we need, is there a reason why an invoice can't be delivered?
Are you asking me? That's not my department.
So, yeah.
Well, I'd, we weren't asked for them, otherwise, they would have been provided.
I understand, okay.
Is there a reason, is there a reason that those could not be emailed?
I want to take the rest of the week off.
Denied.
That's fine, that's fine. Better, much better than.
So, Mr. Rokenbaum?
Happy to provide, we just needed to know.
Can we, can we make that deadline, so there's no issues?
Yes.
Is that reasonable for you guys?
Anything's reasonable.
Today's my question.
He asked with the word please.
Please.
Please on top. Your second.
You're asking for the invoices that are on this sheet.
The individual invoices that have up to 360,000. Excellent. Yep, thank you.
All right.
All right.
Set an amendment, whose second is it?
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, there's an amendment. I'm going with the second.
You're good with the second. Any other discussion?
This is for the full amount.
This would be the full amount for the 360.
Contingent upon the invoices being provided by the end of the week.
Here's the other.
But that can only happen if we don't have any more emergencies this week.
Mr. President, Mr. Yagowski, Mr. Keel is then, can we take the amount that, yeah, the 125, and then the rest goes?
You want to transfer?
You want to do a transfer on top of that.
Transfer first, 125, and the remainder comes out of?
And the remaining 235.
Whatever you want, wherever.
See, you got to specify where it's coming from.
Is your motion, is that?
I'd do one better, I would say. I'm okay with moving the 100 in there to start to fund your budget going forward for the rest of the year, because you're going to have other expenditures that come forward. But, in, with that, that we get biweekly updates every other week, an update of where you're at, how you're spending it, what it's going towards. Does that seem fair?
How often is this?
How often is a maintenance board meeting? $360,000 appropriation means the transfer from.
Every two weeks. So, can that be part of that regular maintenance committee meeting? To review, to be the liaisons, basically, on where are we with these invoices? That way, you can report out to the rest of the council.
We only have to meet every two weeks now?
That's what we just made a motion for.
Okay, all right.
How often have you been meeting?
About every two weeks.
No, I agree, I agree. I'm giving.
They're caught up completely, they have a little bit of money to finish out the year, which, that should hopefully cover you to the end of the year, maybe? Because otherwise, we're, you're doing projects without an appropriation or any funding to do it.
Correct.
Which is just then, we're back to the same problem.
So, which one, Mr. Keel? Riverboat or Lit?
The 360 out of, does Auditor's Office have a preference between Riverboat or Lit Economic Development?
The answer is not really.
Sorry?
Not really.
Lit economic, 5 million, and Riverboat.
I like to take the rest of them.
I'd say Lit Economic Development is looking better.
Yeah.
It certainly is.
All right, so, to encapsulate all this, $360,000 appropriated out of Lit Economic Development, as long as the invoices are provided by the end of the week, and then approval to transfer $100,000 from your 100 line items to?
A building. Building fund?
Were you talking about the building fund or from their 100s?
Hold on, folks, here. To building repairs.
Building repairs.
You want to take it to the specific account for building repairs, but which 100 accounts are we pulling from? Because I'm looking here.
I gave you 125,000, if you want, I'll just pick 25,000 less out of HVAC, and then we're fine.
Doesn't really matter where, I think.
I took a safe number of 100 last year, I thought it was okay. I could have went 125, but I didn't.
That's why I went with that.
Will you give the auditor the option on what to pick for?
Right.
And then we're done? Thank you.
Yep. Does that sound good? Perfect. Cool.
I want you to repeat that entire motion.
We've gotten it, we're good.
We're good.
Move on.
All right. So we have a motion for the additional appropriation, plus the transfer in order to cover further expenses. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You good?
Thank you.
All right. The Port County Prosecutor requests additional appropriation from wind tax to be used for monthly charge for prosecutor's server. The amount of $33,012. Mr. Prosecutor.
Yes, sir, that money is basically the average cost per month of 2,700 multiplied by years out, so about 33,000, as you can see.
So we have options for Riverboat and wind tax.
Just a quick question before I make a motion. Does this need to be in our budget for next year, too? This is an ongoing cost?
Yes, sir.
All right, so.
Yes, let's make them duly noted, so. A little pad there, write that down.
Then, do we need 33,000 for the rest of the year?
We're going to need, we need 33,000 for annual fee. Well, 20, how much a month?
About 2,700 and change.
So in your budget, Mr. Prosecutor, you could, because we didn't really cut anything, is there any way that we could, that you could take care of that 2,700 dollars for next year, per month? Could you transfer in one of your other accounts to do that?
That's by the yearly cost. So the 30?
Hang on a minute.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Remember, as you and I talked about some, you know?
Let me, that's a complicated question, because this is subject to ongoing litigation right now, so the, at the same time, though, this is a, an existing contract, both with the vendor and with the county, with commissioners. And so, while it is, it's part of ongoing litigation, so I don't really want to get into the.
Understood.
Really deal with it.
Is this paid monthly or annually?
Monthly.
So, so, could I offer, until you figure out what Mr. Yagowski asked you for? If we put, say, five months at $2,800 a month, round it up, make sure it's covered, that's $14,000. So if we prove $14,000 tonight to get it started, and get it down the road, so we can figure out where it's going to be budgeted, that'll take you till, it'll take you for five months, so.
The contract, I believe, renews in April with the vendor. So maybe something through April? That may.
So that's four.
You're going for two more months. 5,600 more. So if you say two, but then I have to split this between the two years. And I can put in his, I can put in.
22,400.
Is there a problem with Mr. Novak's proposal?
No, no.
That work?
Who's, who's paying the vendor's contract now?
Well, the money is coming out of.
Randy, we funded that. With the, with the litigation.
Okay.
All right.
The other thing is, is though, I'm assuming that those 80 licenses, or 60 licenses that Mr. Fagan has now, should actually be off of our books.
So they should be saved.
Be coming off of our books, so somebody needs to look at that. Because before, his licenses were under the county's licenses for the email. So that's something that needs to be looked at.
So, the tax comes on the IT board?
Intent.
Okay.
And to also speak on another point, part of these licenses would be covered by 4D funds, so there's an additional saving, so we got to, once we kind of get things streamed out, I think we'll have much better financial picture.
Okay.
For purposes of solving the litigation, I'm going to make a motion for 22,400, which will take it through April.
To your contract.
Right. So, out of Riverboat.
I can, I can't do it this way. I can put into a budget for next year, for some amount of it, and I can only have, you, I'm not going to be able to encumber for next year, because that's next year's bills.
But he can do an additional appropriation for a future year's budget.
Go back to my original.
Next year's bills.
So it's either an additional appropriation, or we take them through December.
Is this month's paying?
I would suggest that we take it through December.
I think so.
And I will put in the budget, which would be out of the 100, the general fund for, for through April, and then future decisions can be made.
If you're able to get an annual contract for this, that might be easier in the future.
There is an annual contract.
We did, it is an annual contract, that's how we were able to encumber some of the funds from last year through this year.
So, I'm going to change my motion to 11,200, to get us through the end of the year, and we have budget hearings coming up, so that full number will be put into.
Next year's.
Our budget for next year, so we can improve that to make sure it's there.
Mr. Keel, the issue is that it's not a calendar year contract, so maybe we need to talk to the vendor and see if it can get bumped to a calendar year, which might make it easier for the council.
That's what it sounds like. Maybe you can sign a new one in January.
Yeah, maybe we can go ahead and do that.
So. All right. 11,200, out of River.
Next year's budget.
Yeah. Out of Riverboat from Mr. Novak, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Keel, any further questions, comments? All in favor for 11,200 out of Riverboat, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right. Motion approved as.
$40,000 user fee fund for claims accounts.
I'll take that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kessler, second by Mr. Novak. Any further discussion?
Thank you very much for your detailed email, so we knew where it was going, appreciate it.
This come from a guy that beat him up last month.
I didn't beat him up. We just had a discussion.
All right. All in favor, out of 40,000 out of user fees, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Port County Auditor requests additional appropriation of $830,000.
Yeah, I gave you the better detail on this sheet, so that you can see the breakdown on the cash flow. I didn't have it at the time that this had.
This for the shortage from last year?
Well, the shortage from last year, and then we've added a little for the insurance for this year.
How much is a little?
Which is a little, 150,000.
Okay. So. May I ask?
Absolutely.
The increase for the next three months. I just said 50,000 a month.
Okay.
I don't know the exact number yet.
Do you think that's the offset on the insurance cost?
I'm praying it is.
On the new policy?
Yes, I'm praying it is.
You're praying.
Okay. Yeah. So, I entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Out of?
Out of economic.
So, 830 out of Lit Economic Development by Mr. Novak, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kessler. Any further discussion? All in favor for 830 coming out of Lit Economic Development, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. And requesting permission to spend appropriate $10,000 for payroll funds due to replacement personnel.
This would be coming from our ineligible Auditor's Fund. We had hired somebody early in the year at a much higher rate, about $7,000 more for this part of the year, and then recently, we hired somebody else with a lot seasoned compared to the person before, so that would be the other 2, 3,000 on top of it.
So this is?
That would cover us for this year, and then we'll have their regular salaries in our, you know, in our regular 100s.
So bridging the gap due to step differences?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and we're, we're taking it, we're not asking to cover it.
All right, I entertain a motion.
Maybe you got two or no.
No, I looked.
Mike, are you looking for?
No, we're good.
Nope, we're good. All right. We're good. All right. See that? Okay. Entertained a motion, what do you got?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Mr. Novak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullenhour. Last minute questions?
Good.
All in favor for $10,000 out of Auditor's ineligible fund, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now we have a request for $65,000 for gap financial reporting from Riverboat or Lit Economic Development.
Motion to approve out of 1191 Riverboat.
Motion approved from Mr. Kessler.
Second.
Second by Mr. Press. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Port County Treasurer, requesting 15,900 for a Canon CR190 East Dub and Check Scanner. Mr. Treasurer.
Good evening, Counsel. Just a few things that I believe this machine will help the office, one of them is customer service. Right now, if you've ever been in the office, you'd know that the mail lady brings anywhere from one to five tubs of mail a day. They're about three feet long, about wide stacked full mail. We pay someone to sort through them for the date, so we always work on the oldest mail first to try to keep that, and we get a lot of phone calls, people calling, wanting to know, how come their check hasn't cleared the bank yet, and that type of thing there, so. This machine does a couple things, it can, runs 100 checks per minute through it. So it obviously speeds up time on processing checks. It also checks the check, the written word versus the dollar amount. Very easy for someone to write a check and forget to put like the 100 in there, or one. And then when that goes to the bank, they'll kick it back to us, and then we have to amend their bill, and then notify the customer that their check is short for their payment. That would stop that. So that would give us a little bit better customer service turnaround our check time. And also save us time not having to sort the mail out through, you know, oldest to newest. By processing the checks faster, we can obviously get the money in the bank a lot quicker. Money goes in the bank, we make more interest on that money. Conservately estimating, if we would have had this machine and got our money in within a day or two of receiving the checks, we could have gained another approximately 40,000 in interest, just on the tax collection for the couple weeks that we had it. We took in, right about 57 million dollars were the checks through our office. So it's a big number, but it's still money that deposited quicker, would get in the bank faster, and make the county a little bit more money, give better customer service, because people aren't wondering where their checks are, waiting while we catch up. We probably wouldn't have to close the office for the week then also, so. I've talked to other counties that have it, and it's been a godsend for them just by processing it. So when the machine runs a check, you upload the file right into our LOAIS system, so everything is updated. So it's, it's quite amazing. It does a wonderful job as far as speeding up the process and making sure the check is right. A lot of people make mistakes writing checks, a lot of people don't write checks hardly anymore. Like you write one or two checks a year. In fact, we get a lot of people come on account and say, hey, it's, you know, first check I've written since last year I paid my taxes, so. I think with the added customer service, and the positive impact of the county receiving a little more interest, it'd be a worthy machine to purchase. It's one time for the 11,900, and then there's a fee every year to reprogram it for new tax bills and stuff, and maintenance.
So if I recap this, you take this scanner, this takes you away from having to do the hand sorting of the mail in, from oldest to newest. What amount of delay do you really, what do you see in terms of delay from the time you receive the mail to the time it's actually getting to the bank?
Having enough people to sit there and actually to punch in through the system, time you scan it, and you hit the computer, five or six clicks to get that bill through. And that delay, that delay. So.
So if I say in days, right, from the time you started the tote that came in, to the time you've got all of those checks to the bank, is it three days, is it seven days, is it 10 days?
We can be two to three weeks behind.
Okay.
That easily?
I'm sorry. I can add that on.
Cory, our chief deputy.
Yep.
Chief Deputy, I, on May 12th, when we closed, I glanced just to see where we were at. So for the mail that was there, we were on May 3rd, if it gives you some perspective, and that was with overtime, laid out late nights, and nonstop processing. So in between customers, everybody is processing checks through the mail. This offers them almost a same-day processing throughout collections. So, what I did do is I pulled real numbers, though, so that way you could see, and I apologize, I only made one copy, but from the 13th through the 16th, when we were closed, we pulled in that much money and were in screen. And just if that was in Trust Indiana for those four days, we would have made $20,000 on that interest. And that was stuff that was already there from May 3rd. So, it's, it could have paid for itself on the first go-around.
Okay.
But approximately two weeks behind.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions?
It automatically gets to LOAIS. And they, so, like Mike just said, and they do recommend it, it's, and the nice part is, is that it does give a scanned copy immediately, and what Dan was mentioning was that it picks up the discrepancies between the two things. I will tell you that I have spent between one and three, four hours in the evening trying to find one digit off, and it's because we are doing a lot of manual entry. The numbers, ones look like nines, and, or nines look like fours, and it is a nightmare. So I can say that just having a report that says, hey, there's something going on with these numbers, would be a big time changer in the office.
All right. Questions concerning some counsel?
I think the time savings and the extra interest is pretty compelling right by itself.
To, just to clarify, you still have to open the envelope.
Yes, sir.
You still got to take the tax bill out, and log that. You don't, it scans the tax bill also?
It scans, yeah, it scans the tax bill and the check.
And the check, that's why, just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
And how much is the machine versus the yearly maintenance? Because that's something that we were. Because that's something that we were.
He sent me a note. I asked her that earlier, and it was.
$11,000 for the machine.
And $3,000 and something for the.
It's $3,000 in ongoing costs.
We got a copy of everyone if you want.
Is it based on usage, or is it based on?
It's flat rate. I do. I do.
You can have this one when we're done, Mike.
Oh, is that? I got it right here if you want it. Was this yours?
So it's $4,000?
Well, that one's.
Yes.
It was $11,000 for the original machine and.
And yearly maintenance is.
And the maintenance comes right out of Indiana, so they can be here within two hours.
Okay.
And you don't get a deal if you do multi-year contract?
We could ask, but no. I have talked to Hamlin County, who uses it, and it's been a time saver and a godsend to them because it catches a lot of little errors that we spend a lot of time tracking down. When you feel like so many checks, numbers start looking the same, so.
And just looking at the numbers, the savings numbers, right? So right now, we're being asked for $15,000 for the scanner with $20,000 savings in by the interest received twice a year. Right, so $40,000 for a $15,000 initial payment. And after that, it's, say it's $40,000 a year, a year, interest saved.
Actually, I believe.
Or $4,000 interest, or $4,000 investment.
Looking for a motion?
I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve out of Lit.
Second. Motion approved by Mr. Pressle out of Lit Economic Development, second by Mr. Keel. Any further discussion? All in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Port County Board of Commissioners requesting additional appropriation of $50,000 for legal fees from either Riverboat or Wintex.
She almost got out.
I don't think Guy's on there anymore.
I didn't think Guy's not on there anymore.
What did I request it for?
Legal fees.
Yes.
What did you request it for?
Obviously, let me get my little plan here.
I think Guy left you hanging on purpose.
That's okay, I can handle it. Legal fees right now were $4,185.51 in the hole. Our professional consulting fees, we have $829.3 in it. In our professional services, we have $25.54 in it currently today.
How many invoices do we have piling up waiting for payment right now?
Well, right now, we're just, we're paying them regardless. I mean, so they come, they're coming in and we're paying them, we're processing them. I don't think.
So the auditor's office is paying them into the negative?
Well, I think the whole negative thing happened was, and I think this was a clerical error in our office, so when the money was, at the last council meeting, you allowed us like X amount of dollars, I don't even remember what it was.
Fifty.
But fifty? And so what happened was she paid it out of the wrong account. So she thought it was going to go into our legal fee account, but then we find out that it goes into another account instead of pulling it out of our legal fee. We're supposed to pull it out of another one. So over at the auditor's office, they're pulling it out of the right account, but now we're minus in our accounts. So now it's just a matter.
A claims adjustment was made.
Okay.
To fix it.
Okay.
So they're just trying to stay on top in.
So right now, as I understand it, we're flush. We're not, we're not in arrears for a number of invoices, but we're.
Yeah, we're.
Back and neck.
Yeah. So like when you look at our professional services, we pay New Avenue's, Maximus, Baker Tilly's. When you're looking at the consulting services, we're paying people like Sunder and Sunder, Jim Myers, SEH, Peterson Consulting, Baker Tilly. So these are all services that we obviously have contracted through for years and years and years. Nothing's changed. And again, I know you guys don't want to hear this, but like when you look at the professional consulting service, in 2018, when I was here, that budget was $130,000. Today, that same budget is $88,000. So our consulting fees didn't go down, but yet you lowered our budget. And so the promise was always that if we needed money, we had to come back and we had to ask for it.
Understood.
And here we are.
Okay.
And so same thing, I could read you the other numbers.
But so, yeah, let's just try to keep them, because we've got two different line items for you up here. We have one for legal fees, which is what we're talking right now.
Okay.
And looks like you've got a partner in crime that came onto Zoom for a little bit.
Can I walk away now?
Sure.
Mr. DiMartino, so we're talking legal fees, seems that we are basically flushed when it comes month, month to month right now when it comes to invoices for legal, does that sound in line with what you know?
So you're saying that you're up to date?
Sounds that we're up to date. We're not behind, we're not, but we are negative by about $4,100 is what.
May I add a comment? So we're going to start getting, they're going to start getting bills from the attorneys for the different boards and stuff, and so those are going to need to be paid. So they're breakeven right now, but they need the funds to cover.
We still have costs because of operating between now and the end of the year, absolutely. I know a guy next to.
And remember, again, we went from $150 an hour to $175, and we never increased our budget.
That's a good thing to know. Okay.
And Mr. Beji wanted it to go to 200.
It needs to be at 200, gentlemen. That's what, that's what the other municipalities are paying. And don't make me wait for my bill to be paid at 175.
All right, we try not to.
So the same thing, Mr. Karanka, is, you know, there's work in progress, so there's bills that have not come through. I know like Mr. Friedman just resolved the litigation matter today, so that final bill's going to come through. You know, I have some outstanding bills, I'm sure Mr. Beji has some outstanding bills. So even though if you're a little bit behind right now, I mean, you know, Mr. Adamski has bills out there, so you're, I'm saying you probably have $25,000, $30,000 outstanding that's not come through yet or been billed yet.
No, that's part of doing business, I understand that. Okay.
And again, our budget in 2018, $250,000, now we're down to $240,000, which is only $10,000 difference lower. But our rate for paying our attorneys went from $150 to $175, and we're still probably the lowest paying municipality to our attorneys.
Understood. It's a pleasure to the counsel.
You're just going with the first one of the $50,000?
Just talking $50,000 right now.
Motion approved.
Out of.
Wintex.
Motion approved by Mr. Mullenhour out of Wintex. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pressle. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving out of Wintex, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Good night, gentlemen.
Oh, you're not done.
Oh, no, you're not done.
You're not done.
Well, I mean, you can be.
No, no, no. All right. Requesting additional appropriation for professional services and professional consulting in the amount of $38,750. As we were talking about the last line item, we talked about New Avenue's, you talked about a number of other consulting firms. These are in support of?
Okay, so like New Avenue is our insurance. Maximus is 4D. Baker Tilly could be a number of different things. Sunder and Sunder, remember when we were short of the insurance? We asked them to come in and analyze that, but they do do other work for us as well.
Are yours?
James Meyer helped us with the MS4. SEH, can you tell us?
SEH was prior year, so, you know, paid this year, so.
Peterson Consulting. Again, I don't.
That's us, and that's, they do the capital assets for us.
And then we have a.
That was 4,100.
So some of yours are paid out of there.
Yeah, because.
Oh, yeah.
We don't have special line items for it. We could do that in the budget if you wanted to, but I didn't even want to bring that up today, I just wanted to move forward.
But like Maximus, you know, that's for 4D, we have to pay that. I mean, there's a lot of things that are under us.
Understood. Understood. Mr. Giegelsky?
Yeah, Maximus.
Help me with Maximus 4D, what's that for?
Maximus? So they do, so it's child support, it has to do with child support, but it's like the reporting of child support, like how many people do.
Okay.
It's not, which one is it?
Maximus does an audit for the entire county, and it, they do their 4D audit with 4D funding. But in order to receive federal funds, we have to have an audit of all of our other grants, employees, payroll.
So it's not 4D, because 4D is reimbursable?
No, I just said that.
I know, but.
In order to get the 4D grants.
Oh, we need the Maximus.
Need to have the other part of the county government audited.
So I'm agreeing with.
That's what they do. The 4D part that they do is paid by 4D.
Okay, so if you're, any money involved in grants for the 4D though is reimbursable?
No, no, no. It's not involved in.
So we got to say there's.
In order for them to get it.
Yes.
Right?
Two different parts.
But in order to get the 4D, you need to do.
You have to do this part.
It's all federal, it's all federal grants.
Yeah, they're all federal grants.
But 4D pays their own freight for their part of the audit.
And the rest we have to pay.
There's two parts to the audit. 4D cannot pay for the other part of the, for the non-4D.
But if we don't do it, we won't get the grants.
Right. We have to have it. It's like, you know, whether you want it or not, you've got to do it.
Clear as mud?
No.
But okay. All right.
Time to move on.
Motion to approve out of.
Riverboat this time.
Motion to approve $38,750 out of Riverboat from Mr. Mullenhour. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kessler. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Good night, Tracy.
Thank you.
All right. And finally, Port County Clerk of the Circuit Court.
I'm so hungry. Hi.
Good evening.
Hi.
All right, so as I read this, it's kind of jumbled up how we're looking at it, but you're looking for $2,500 and $12,000, both coming from your 8899 Clerk Title 4D incentive.
Correct.
Correct. And these are for other supplies and other services and charges. What do you get going?
Oh, we have, we have Malcon. Malcon comes in and they, they don't come in. Basically, they keep track. Before I took office, the reconciliation wasn't being done for the 4D program within the clerk's office. At that time, Malcon came in, they keep everything super tidy, everything's reconciled, they know how much time we're spending on, on 4D work, child support work, all that good stuff. So this, this fund that we have, it's very specific as to how we can spend it. This is one of the very few ways that I can spend it, not have to spend your money.
Okay. Motion approved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion second by Mr. Giegelsky and Mr. Kessler. Any further discussion? All in favor of approves appropriating out of 8899 for $14,500, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, so now you have, we're down to the 1119 Clerk's Record Perpetuation and a number of items looking to be $26,420.
Yes, so typically I come at the beginning of the year and I move this money so that I can pay for our part-time scanning people. But at the beginning of this year, I needed those people to do other things that wasn't just related to the preservation of documents. Therefore, I couldn't pay them out of that fund. Now, now that project is over, now I can pay them strictly out of this fund, but I need to transfer the money.
Okay.
Needs to be appropriated.
Yes.
Permission spent.
That's it.
We're not transferring, so.
All right. Motion approved.
To me, it's a transfer.
All right. So motion approved from Mr. Novak. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kessler, I have one question. So looking at your OASDI and your Medicare part-time, it's roughly $420 for $10,000. From talking with the auditor's office, the number doesn't quite line up. Good to come back if we have, if you run into it.
Yes.
We can also do it, we can also do a transfer. This was, we, yeah, we didn't get into conversation on this, but we can also transfer in the 100s, amongst 100, so we can take care of what's needed.
Motion.
So you don't need to worry about it.
We don't need to do that. We, uh, vote.
That's with you.
Hey, Lions game's on, all right? All right, so we have a motion and second. All in favor of approving, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the Port County Circuit Clerk looking for request an additional appropriation of $3,000 for a new copy machine for the Michigan City Clerk's Office.
So I had to buy the copy machine out of my office supply budget because we were down. IT was involved, Darlene was wonderful, and I got a much smaller machine. So what I'm doing, and that's kind of been the plan, I think we talked about it a little bit at budget hearings because I was trying to plan for next year. So what I'm going to do in Michigan City, I replaced their big one with a small one. The next, they had two big ones, now they have one large, one smaller. When the, when the larger machine goes down, and I know it's going down next year if it makes it that long, but when that larger machine goes down, I'll have to replace, replace it with a large one. I plan to do the same in LaPorte. We'll have one big one for the large jobs, but I'll try to use the cheaper for the individual offices. But everyone can be connected to that larger printer copier if they have a big job.
So what's balances in your office supplies right now?
I don't know.
So it was approved, but the copies were approved by Danny?
Yeah.
I know we don't have enough to make it to the end of the year.
Okay. It's a pleasure to the counsel.
Motion approved. Out of.
Second.
You got to.
Yeah, Wintex or Riverboat.
Riverboat.
Motion approved out of Riverboat by Mr. Keel. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Mullenhour. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
And lastly, requesting additional appropriation for regular part-time help in the amount of $6,400 from either Riverboat or Wintex.
And that is because we were working on a different project. I couldn't pay them out of the perpetuation fund, I had to pay them out of my part-time budget, which is going to leave me short at the end of the year. Well, I think I'm right there right now.
And all fairness, she did take a hit in the budget from last year. We did a 50% cut from $50,000 to $25,000 on that budget, so we did say then if we were going to be short, to come back, and.
Yeah.
I know I'm guilty of pushing that forward.
We tried, we tried really hard to get that project done as quickly as we could, and it just took a little longer. I thought I could make it through.
Motion approved out of Riverboat.
Motion approved by Mr. Novak. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kessler. Any further discussion? All in favor approving out of Riverboat, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, counsel attorney comments.
One thing real quick, before I even go into comments, we need to, I'd like to make a motion of support that we cover the cost for Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy for what Doug is doing and for what we've asked HR to do.
We pay them a monthly fee.
So there's no added cost?
It should not be an additional cost.